All this meeting in order. First thing we'd like to do is always open our meeting. We have Marcella Jenkins going to come up and lead us in the prayer and pledges.
Good morning, everyone. Is everyone here? Oh, we've got a lot of people. I'm getting really nervous. That's about right here. It's hits to pray. God with justice and mercy. Thank you for the gift of life and the opportunity to serve the people of our city. Help us to act with character and conviction. Help us to listen with understanding and goodwill. Help us to speak with charity and restraint. Give us a spirit of service. Remind us that we are stewards of your authority. Guide us to be the leaders your people need. Help us to see the humanity and dignity of those who disagree with us and to treat all persons, no matter how weak or poor, with the reverence your creation deserves. God protect our first responders from all hurt, harm, seen and unseen. Give them the compassion and love to all people. Overshow them with the wisdom and understanding that is needed in making good decisions. And finally, Father, renew us with the strength of your presence and the joy of helping to build a community worthy of the human person. We ask this as your sons and daughters, confidence in your goodness and love. In Jesus' name, amen.
Please repeat the pledge after me. Thank you.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honesty Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
We have three pledges this morning, and as I read the pledge that is with your organization, I'd like your organization to come up and stand here beside me as we read the pledge. So everybody here for Red Ribbon Week.
Tom, I think it's a proclamation.
It's a proclamation.
Not a pledge.
Pledge. We did one. It's proclamation.
We did, we did.
Thank you for the correction, Tommy.
Yes.
All right. Y'all get right there.
I'm not sure whether he meant that or not.
Substance abuse disorders particularly damaging to one of our most valuable resources are children and is a contributing factor in the three leading causes of death for teenagers, accidents, homicides, and suicides. It is imperative that visible unified prevention education efforts by community members be launched to eliminate the demand for drugs. It is the goal of Red Ribbon Week in the ADACC to involve families, schools, businesses, churches, law enforcement agencies, and service organizations in all aspects of this campaign and establish an atmosphere that supports awareness, education, ongoing initiatives to prevent illegal drug use. The Red Ribbon Week campaign theme promotes family and individual responsibilities for living healthy, drug-free lifestyles without illegal drugs or the illegal use of legal drugs. There are many activities planned during the Red Ribbon Week campaign in Tom Green County. Therefore, I, Tom Thompson, the mayor of the City of San Angelo, Texas, on behalf of the City Council, do hereby proclaim October 23rd to October 31st, 2025, as Red Ribbon Week and call upon all citizens, parents, governmental agencies, public and private institutions, hospitals, schools, and colleges in the City of San Angelo to support and increase community awareness and prevention efforts in our community. Would somebody like to say some words?
Good morning. My name is Eric Sanchez. I'm the CEO of the Alcohol and Drug Awareness Center for the Concho Valley, commonly known as ADAC, and we want to thank Mayor Thompson, council members, and the city for their support, for their concern, and their ongoing partnership for ADAC and our efforts to save lives in our community. The issue of substance use disorders, addiction, is not going to go away, and we need to work as a community together to address it and address it the best we can. We're there to serve. We're there to accomplish our mission to save lives and create healthier communities. And I want to thank our team, Chris, Rea, Kayla, thank you so much for being here, and all our team for all the work they do day in and day out to make San Angelo a better place and a healthier place to live. Thank you so much, Mayor.
We would have been asked for it. So the people with the Community Planning Month, that would be all the planning department. Rick, come on down. Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. You got to be in on this one. Oh, yeah. As the ringleader, he has to be in. Do you want to read it? It's not photo yet. It doesn't have to be that perfect, but anyway. Exactly. Yeah. Sure shows on this one. Anyway. Change is constant and affects all communities. Planners can help navigate this change with data-driven insights and expertise that provide better choices for how people work and live. Community planning provides an opportunity for residents to be meaningfully involved in making choices that determine the future of their community. The full benefits of planning require public elected and appointed officials who understand, support, and demand excellence in planning. The month of October is designated as National Community Planning Month throughout the United States. The American Planning Association endorses this month as an opportunity to highlight how planning is essential to every community and how planners are uniquely positioned to identify solutions to communities' most difficult questions. This proclamation gives us the opportunity to publicly recognize the participants and dedication of public officials who have contributed their time and expertise to the improvements of the City of San Angelo, as well as the many valuable contributions made by the professional community and planners of the City of San Angelo. Therefore, I, Tom Thompson, Mayor of the City of San Angelo, Texas, on behalf of the City Council, and in conjunction with the celebration of National Community Planning Month, hereby proclaim the month of October 2025 as Community Planning Month and encourage all citizens to recognize the importance of community planning in creating a livable, sustainable, and prosperous future for all in our community. Aaron?
You're up. Thank you, Mayor Thompson, City Council, City Administration. Very excited about our planning team as well as those volunteers that are appointed by City Council members. We have a couple of them here today, Lyndon and Brittany, that serve on our planning commission, and they are key to making decisions for our community. And as you citizens sit out there or hear this, we really want you involved in our community. So please contact our city clerk or even your elected official to say, I really want to participate in our community. Is there somewhere on a board or commission that I could sit on that could help drive our future? In the next 18 months, we're going to be starting on our comprehensive plan for our community that'll lead us through 2050. That's really, really important for our community. We're looking at fiscal stewardship. We're looking at data-driven solutions for our community. So we're very excited about this. And again, thank you again, Mayor, for doing this proclamation. And we've got a great staff team here with us today. We've got Ray Lineberry. We've got Austin Reed. We've got Karen Putnam and Arden Neff. And then, of course, Major with our Metropolitan Planning Organization, who does a lot of stuff in planning for us, big picture stuff. So we're very excited about having them. And then, of course, our Assistant City Manager, Rick Weiss, who started out as a planner and then went to the dark side. So, but we're very excited about it. And then Charlie Kemp's our Assistant Director back there. She's hiding back there. So she's doing a great job, too. So, thank you, everybody.
Let's get a photo. Hey, Charlie? That's the penalty for trying to hide in the back. Don't let him hide in the back. Who's here with the Energy Efficient Month? Mike, have you got your crew? I brought a small army with you today.
Taking over.
I didn't bring my patch. I had my patch, but I didn't. I know. Oh, you have a speech prepared. He can stand here. They can see right over. Wow. If you'd have known how long her and I have battled. All right. All right, y'all. Born out of Lyndon B. Johnson's war on poverty and the advocacy of Dr. Martin Luther King, Jr., community action agencies fight for the promise that every individual and family should have an opportunity for success. Founded in 1966, Concho Valley Community Action Agency has a nearly six-decade history of providing assistance and promoting self-sufficiency for citizens of limited income. CVCAA plays a vital role in supporting low-income families and underserved communities by advocating for policies and programs that improve living conditions and economic opportunities. Energy efficiency is a powerful tool in reducing energy costs, alleviating the burden on low-income households, and advancing social and economic equity. October has been designated as Energy Efficiency Month, providing an opportunity to raise awareness about the benefits of energy efficiency and the positive impact it holds for low-income families and the entire community. Energy-efficient homes not only reduce energy bills, but also contribute to cleaner air, healthier living environments, and enhance economic stability for residents, particularly those facing financial hardships. With a mission of helping people and changing lives, CVCAA has helped numerous households cut down their utility spending and made our region a better place to live, work, and play. Therefore, I, Tom Thompson, Mayor of the City of San Angelo, Texas, on behalf of the City Council, do hereby proclaim October 2025 as Energy Efficient Month in San Angelo, Texas, and want to emphasize the importance of energy, equity, and sustainability for all. Together, we can work towards a brighter future for our great city. Mike, do you have a few short words?
A few short comments. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. We do appreciate your support in highlighting the importance of energy conservation, especially for our most vulnerable neighbors. At CVCAA, we've been running weatherization programs since the '70s through the Department of Energy's Weatherization Assistance Program and the Low Income Home Energy Assistance Program. These programs aren't just about sealing windows or adding insulation. They're about dignity, safety, and economic stability. When we weatherize a home, we're helping families reduce their bills, stay warm in the winter, cool in the summer, all while improving health outcomes and reducing emissions. For low-income households, these upgrades can mean the difference between choosing to pay for heat or buying groceries. We have our CVCAA team here. It takes a village to help our community. Most of our weatherization staff is actually out in the field with our state monitors, but Ricky is one of our weatherization techs hiding in the back here. So as we continue this legacy of service, we're proud to stand with you and the city,
We'll now move over to public comment. Members of the public may raise issues or concerns not listed on the regular agenda during this time. To participate, please sign in with the city clerk prior to the beginning of the meetings. Speakers will be called in order they signed in. When speaking, citizens must speak from the podium. Will address all comments to the dais begin by stating your name and address or single-member district number, and limit your remarks to three minutes or less. Heather, do we have any public comment this morning?
Yes, sir. Oliver Mayer.
Say the name again.
Oliver Mayer.
Is Oliver here? Next on public comment, Heather.
Arliece Green.
Good morning, Mayor. Council members and the citizens of San Angelo, Texas. First of all, I want to thank you for letting me come and present the SBA Disaster Assistance Program. At this point, everyone should know that we've been here to offer assistance for the damages that occurred back on July 2nd. So I am here to give an update on the 60-day extension period, which will end on November 3rd, 2025, for physical damages. And who is eligible for that program? Homeowners, renters, businesses, and nonprofit organizations. And we also have another program that will end on June 15th, 2026, and that program is for businesses and nonprofit organizations only. And in that program, they do not necessarily need to have any physical damages. The damages comes in economic injury. A lot of businesses and nonprofit organizations say, oh, I didn't get any damages. I wasn't affected. But six months to a year later, their revenue is down, and they're wondering what happened. They have been impacted by the injury. When a neighboring community, if your community didn't suffer as much damage as the neighbor community did, sometimes with businesses, it trickles down, and they don't know that they have been affected until months later. That's why we give them that extension time to June 15th, 2026. So again, I would like to thank you for letting me come and give an update on the program that we have for your community. I hope that you will take advantage of this program and that it will be beneficial to you all. At this time, I will open the floor for any questions that you may have for me.
Ms. Green, it's just public comment. You've made that. We'll work with our Public Information Office to make sure this information gets put out and conveyed. Thank you so much for coming this morning.
Thank you for having me.
Thank you. Heather?
And lastly, Mike Burnett.
Mike Burnett. Hmm. Another few short words. Exactly. And you'll use them all.
I will use them all. But I'm not a pirate anymore, so.
Exactly. We're glad to see you.
Thank you, Council. I'd like to take a moment to introduce two new team members at CVCAA who are helping guide our community through recovery and resilience. Melissa Hernandez is our Director of Community Care Coordination. Her team provides holistic case management, working one-on-one with individuals and families to develop individualized service plans that address not just immediate needs but long-term goals in flood recovery. Whether it's housing, healthcare, food, or financial stability, Melissa's team is walking alongside each household, helping them navigate systems and build a path forward. As we move through the flood recovery, the Community Care Coordination Team is laying the groundwork for something bigger. This isn't about just disaster response. It's the first step in building a long-term, community-centered care model. The same level of holistic case management we're providing now will extend into other areas across the entire Concho Valley, wherever the need arrives. And it will be a core component of the Rock Rose Campus, where we are creating a hub for wraparound services that meet people where they are. This approach will also help us respond to future challenges, whether it's another disaster or systemic issue that needs to be coordinated, compassionate response. Community care coordination is not just a program. It's a promise to walk alongside our neighbors, no matter what they're facing. Next, Marcus Osborne is our Director of Community Resiliency. He leads our disaster response and recovery efforts and will be deeply involved in broad community planning and linkage. Marcus will be overseeing the San Angelo Area COAD, the community organizations active in disaster, and the LTRG Long-Term Recovery Group. His work is to build on the already-established collaborations with local agencies, faith groups, and government partners to ensure a coordinated response to disasters. Marcus's work isn't just reactive. He will also be building resiliency programs during blue-sky times before disaster strikes in every county across the Concho Valley. These programs focus on preparedness, education, and strengthening local networks so that when the next crisis comes, our communities are ready. Together, Melissa and Marcus are helping ensure that recovery is not just about rebuilding homes, it's about restoring lives, strengthening systems, and preparing for the future. And as every new challenge arises, we will be ready, not just to respond, but to lead with compassion, coordination, and community. I'd like to say thank you to the city and our community partners for walking alongside us in this work. We're proud to be your partners in building a stronger and more resilient Concho Valley.
Thank you. Thirty seconds left. Heather, any additional public comment? All right. With that, y'all, we'll move into the consent agenda, and I'll go down the dais and ask if anyone has anything to pull. And I'll start with you, Mary. Do you have anything you want to pull, Mary?
Yes, well, not necessarily pull, but I do have a couple of questions on F.
All right. So we'll have to pull it to discuss it.
I'm sorry?
We'll have to pull it to discuss it. So do you want to pull F?
Yes, please.
All right. Karen?
Aye.
Aye. Patrick?
Good to go.
Harry?
No, sir.
Nothing to pull. Tommy? So we'll look for a motion to approve all items except I and F. I have a first from Harry.
Second.
Second from Karen Hesse Smith. Any public comment? With no public comment on those items, we'll take a vote for all items except I and F. Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All those items pass, 6-0. Now we'll go to item F. Consider a resolution updating the standard detail SX1 Street and barricade, January 08th, to include slip wedge, pole base, breakaway pole standards, and side reference to text dot OM4 coordinating subdivision installations to match citywide traffic sign hardware. Kevin Pate or Shane Kelton?
Yes.
Sorry.
Ms. Goffey, how, what questions can we answer for you?
Well, on this, with it being a text dot, is this, at last meeting, there was a question is following text dot standards with the delineators? And I don't know if this is part of that or just, anytime I see text dot, I see costing money. And so.
Yes, ma'am. There, this, and while these are, these are text dot, normal text dot standards, which they, we have the Texas Manual on Uniform Traffic Control Devices, which follows the nationwide manual on uniform traffic control devices. And there are several different standards within the text dot, within the, within the standards. There are several different standards within the entire, the entire manual. And so one of the ones that we utilize is not, is not the ones that you see on the text dot with the high-speed roadways, with the big bases and the three bolts. We actually use, we actually use a base and a pole and a slip wedge anchor, which is a more cost-effective means of meeting the same safety and the same, and the same uniformity of the text dot code.
Good deal. I was, I was looking at it more from an infrastructure side, but that's not what this is. So thank you. Appreciate it.
I have a question, Shane.
Yes.
And maybe Daniel can answer as well. So are these going to be for temporary roads or only permanent endings?
These are for only permanent endings. We do have, there is, is part of the end of it, and of course, Mr. Jones spoke at the last meeting, his concerns on the temporary road, and so did Mr. Templin as well, had those same concerns and brought those, brought those forward to us at the city. And so we do have, we do have within the specifications, if it's, if it's a temporary dead-end marker where that road is going to extend into the, into the future with a phased development approach, then they can use the four-by-four wood posts like they have been using in the past, just buried 36 inches in the soil.
Okay. Thank you.
Get a motion?
I'd like to move to accept item F.
I have a first from Mary. Second from Tommy Hebert. Any public comment? With none, we'll take a vote on item F. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed, item passes 6-0. Now we'll move to I. Second reading of an ordinance amending Chapter 2 Administration and Personnel, Article 207 Boards, Committees, and Commissions, Division 1, Generally, Section 2.07.001, Organizations and Procedure by Providing for Alternative Board Members Providing for Severability and Providing for an Effective Date. Brandon, you're on.
This is a good thing. Glad to see it. A couple of quick questions, though. Can an alternate member be elevated to a board seat if a position becomes available?
I mean, I think you'd have to separately nominate them and have them re-approved as We may need to look at that further and get back with you.
Direction, should we table?
Well, so the purpose of this was if we didn't, if we didn't obtain a quorum, not to hold up the pace of business. And so we could put an alternate in there to temporary fill that position. Now, that's not a full-time appointment. That was just looking for a temporary appointment. So I would think, and we'll leave this up to legal, but if we do want somebody to serve permanently, they have to be appointed and go through the standard process.
That's my understanding, but I think we may have a prior research and legal opinion on this that I'd like to look back at before I give a.
So suggestion at this one, we just pull the item and don't vote it and table it?
Yeah, I think so.
All right. Do I have to have a motion to table it?
I'll make a motion to table.
Yeah.
I have a first from Karen and a second from Patrick to table this item. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? With no nays, this items will be tabled for a later time. Am I good to move forward? All right. Let's go ahead and move into the regular agenda. Comments regarding the items on the regular agenda may be made by the public when each item is discussed as outlined above. To participate, please sign in with the city clerk prior to the beginning of the meeting. Speakers will be called in order they signed in. Comments are limited to less than three minutes. Applicants, proponents, and appellantents are exempt from the time limit above and instead must limit their remarks to less than five minutes. Item A, consider approving the over 65 retiree coverage at the recommendation premium and authorizing the city manager to negotiate and execute all related documents. Presentation made by HR Director Veronica Sanchez.
Good morning, Council, Mayor. Thank you. Veronica Sanchez, HR Director. Today, I bring to you the funding portion of the over 65 Medicare Advantage Plan that we currently offer. If you remember, at the last meeting, Council approved to select Humana as the provider for this service. So as promised, we're bringing back the funding piece for that, that there were some conversations that we needed to have with the retiree group. So before I go over this slide, I do want to give you, I guess, a quick rundown of what occurred last year with this service. It went out to bid because of some legislative changes. That increase came back at somewhere around 65%. Pretty hefty increase. The staff.
Do you have a dollar amount on that increase?
I don't have the dollar amount on that increase. I apologize.
The common thing is over $500,000.
It was $550,000.
In order to try to reduce that percentage increase, staff, City Council, I believe, the retiree group got together and determined that maybe they could reduce, I'm sorry, implement some plan changes. So the implementation of some sort of a co-pay or co-insurance might be helpful to reduce that cost. By the time this was decided, they could not go to a different vendor for the service, and plan changes could not be implemented. So the city moved forward with providing the service to the over 65 group at 0% increase to their premium, along with zero plan changes. They maintained their plan. The city did incur a cost for having to move forward in that direction to the tune of $500,000. What it equates to, I guess, in terms of premium, I don't have that number for you. Okay? So, fast forward to this year, we went out to bid for this service again. Initially, the renewal rate came in at somewhere around 31.13%. That's an increase of about $120 per month, per member, regardless of who absorbs that increase, whether it's the city or the retiree. Annualized increase is 4.66, $466,000. Retiree first and hub were able to get another bid from a different vendor, which, again, is who you selected to provide this coverage next year, that's Humana. The initial increase came at 9%. They were able to renegotiate that down to 4.18%. They were able to renegotiate that down to four point one-eight percent. That's a $62,000 increase to expenses, and that equals thirteen dollar and fifty-two cent increase for the premium or the cost in general, regardless of who takes on that increase. So, based on the challenges that we expressed at the last meeting for the fund in general, an unfunded liability of anywhere between three to six million dollars based on claims activity and the development of a healthy fund balance, the recommendation is to increase the premium for this group, the post-sixty-five retiree group, by that thirteen dollars and fifty-two cents. This means their total premium would be thirty-three dollars and ninety-six cents to cover that increase. And with that, I'll take any questions. I'll expand if, if you need me to on any of this information.
Oh, I'm sure we're going to have lots of questions on this, Veronica, so be comfortable. But this is one of the items that, as the city and council, we struggle with every year on how to convey something that there's no proof to it, but it was a discussed norm through the days that if they worked here during a specific time period, they would get insurance for the rest of their life. Now, what we're talking about is a specific benefit on here, that it's a benefit to only a limited group of people, and the cost is spread out amongst the entire group, and many of us, of the employees here, while they campaign for this and help advocate for this, they do not qualify for it. So I commend them and thank them for that, but also that does create a little bit of, just to be honest, some animosity amongst the crowd of, the entire city of San Angelo has to bear this financial burden, so it gets spread out amongst those that don't get this benefit. But, but I see that now in discussions that I've had with Russell and some other people, and I will say this, for the retirees that hear, you probably couldn't pick a better person than Judge Gilbert and Russell to campaign for you, even late at night till the late hours. But regardless of that, the message is, is gone through here clear, but there may be options to this. While this year is determined, we might be able to go and, and be able to keep this at a zero-cost influence, but we would have to change the benefit. I mean, we would have to shop that policy. And Veronica, is it your opinion that if we shop that policy we're talking about, the benefits would stay the same? Would they go up or would they go down?
If you shop this policy, and I guess in, in the goal is to have zero increase, then the benefit would go down. There would have to be implementation of some sort of a co-pay or co-insurance. Again, that was a consideration last year to try to decrease that sixty-five percent increase that was quoted, so I can't anticipate that the benefit would get any richer for no cost.
Realistically, we don't see that happening, but if, if the cost is the item here, then it comes to the point of maybe we will have to shop this next year and see what that would actually be as an alternative to maintain a zero cost. And I know that's one of the key drivers for them, but I just want to get that point out there, there are some options. This year, we have already assumed and closed what it is. Now, we're just trying to determine who's going to cover what percentage of the policy. With that, I will open it up to the dice if anybody has any questions, or Veronica. Tommy? Mary? Yeah, we'll start with you, Mary, and we'll work this way across.
That half a million dollar increase, that's not just on the sixty-five, right? That's, I mean, we saw that everyone's seeing those increased costs and what have you.
That half a million dollar increase last year, or?
Yeah, I'm just trying to clarify, because we've got, you know, the health insurance as a whole for the group, and then we've, you know, got this carved-out part for the over sixty-five. Sometimes the terminologies and the dollars kind of get shifted around.
Yeah, no, that half a million dollar increase was for specifically that, that covers the Medicare Advantage.
Right, but that's, that's what I'm, what I'm looking at now, though, is that sixty-two thousand that we're trying to see who, who gets to pay what.
Uh-huh.
We're talking, what, three hundred and thirty people that are over sixty-five?
Three hundred and thirty people are covered under this plan, yes. About two hundred and sixty, seventy-eight of them are on the Tier One plan, which means they get the benefit of paying the current premium of twenty forty-four.
So we're going into the year twenty-six, into the twenty-sixth year of this, and I'll just be blunt, I don't know how to be any other way, but that group is dwindling, and it will continue to dwindle. To me, the sixty-two thousand, and that's a lot of money. I, I feel like our honor, we have an agreement that we have agreed to honor, and have we looked at, can that be spread somewhere else? Can we find cost savings in other funds that could subsidize this without it hurting either the retirees or diminish any kind of monies available for another fund?
I guess Tina would have to speak in terms of utilizing other funds for this purpose. This has its own fund, and so typically those contributions that we collect, both on the city side and on the employee side, go towards these expenses, whether it's claims or the price of the benefit that we're providing. So.
So we're not able to shop again for this year, but we can next year and maybe put in that tiered deal that has a, where they at least have a choice, rigor choice. But this just, this didn't just sneak up on it, on us, did it? I mean, we kind of ran out of time, didn't we?
No, not necessarily. We did bid it out in time. The reason that it wasn't presented at the last meeting is because we were having conversations with the retiree group, with Russell and Judge Gilbert. And I will say, I fail to mention this, and I apologize to them, I'm sure they'll speak to it, but one of the options that they presented was that when we have that transition from an under sixty-five retiree to an over sixty-five retiree, it does cost the city less to provide that, that service.
Like a half, right?
To the tune of three hundred dollars per member, per month. So, for example, for the next planned year in 2026, we have about twenty-two under sixty-five retirees that will turn sixty-five, so they'll transition into this other group. So we do, the city does pay less for that group. Although it, it seems like a savings because it's one fund, it just means that the city doesn't have to pay that additional three hundred dollars. So those monies go towards claims or other expenses within that fund. So I think that is a viable option for next year in terms of shopping, maybe providing some option that might be at a zero cost, knowing that the plan might just have some changes.
I'm good for right now. I'm sure there'll be others. Thank you.
No problem.
Hello, Veronica.
Morning.
On that, that last talk about you presented, the ones under sixty-five going to over sixty-five, we hire to replace them, and so that just adds back to our cost, does it not? So as one transitions, will we fill back their place, and then that costs us that insurance as well?
Well, it's a retiree, so they're typically.
No, I'm saying they're replacement. Whoever retires, we replace their position.
Correct.
So it's not a, it's not a net, I mean, it's, it's still a loss. We still pay that retirees plus the one.
Yes.
So to me, that's not quite a even swap.
No, not necessarily.
Right. And so just to clarify, that, it, this group, we've had to pay five hundred thousand extra already in the last couple of years, right?
The last year.
And so this is sixty thousand on top of that?
That's correct.
Okay. That's all the questions I had. Thank you.
Eric?
Well, as somebody that fits the group post-sixty-five, since I'm eighty years old, I'm older than a lot of the people that are in the audience, let me ask a couple of things here, just address a couple of things. Mayor indicated that maybe next year we could shop some of these things, but as you shop plans, and Mr. Hebert, you're probably going to get into this, one of the things you got to be careful of is just because you've got a low premium, doesn't mean that's the best plan. What happens when you get a low premium and you've got an increase out-of-pocket cost? Or an increase in co-pay? Those are things I look at all the time as I look at some of my supplemental Medicare stuff. So be careful when you say going to have, keep a low premium, because that may not be the best option for what we've got for the post-sixty-five. The other thing is, is you've got to remember, and this is a business, just like any business in town, legacy costs are going to continue to go up, there's no doubt about it. But at what point in time that that cost, if we don't share that cost, happens, the possibility of having to cut services to all the citizens in San Angelo? Think about that. Mr. Hebert?
I want to zoom out to a bigger picture, Veronica. What is the total spend on the current benefit that is, annual spend on the benefit that is now offered?
For the over sixty-five group?
For the over sixty-five.
Currently, we spend one point five million.
And is, is that just the city's portion?
That's the entire cost.
That's the entire cost, and the city picks up approximately what percent of that?
For two hundred and seventy-eight of those retirees, everything except for twenty dollars and forty-four cents. The, the per-member, per-month cost currently is three hundred and twenty-three dollars. So if, if you could put a percentage on that.
That's probably ninety-something percent, I would assume. For me, this is a big, this is a big pic, a bigger-picture issue. Yeah, it, it, it affects people, no doubt, on a monthly basis, but how much did we have to put in that? Well, let me ask one, one other question. This is a part of the overall self-insurance fund. We don't look at this as a separate pool of money and then the self-insurance fund for the active employees as another pool of money. Isn't it all one pool of money as far as we, just from an accounting standpoint for the city?
That's correct. That's the self-insurance.
And how much did we have to put into our self-insurance fund three months ago?
Three million.
Four months ago? Three million, four million dollars? Because it was underfunded? And you're still telling us that three point five to six point two on top of that that we had to put in there?
Correct.
That, is that correct?
That's correct, and the reason why we had to develop a different plan structure for under sixty-five and active employees this year and obviously increase that premium for them as well.
So for me, this, this is a bigger-picture thing. We have, and this is my opinion, we have responsibility to all the employees and to the citizens as council members to do our best to manage our budgets, our budget prudently. And if we just keep adding cost to this, to me, that would beg the question, is this prudent financial management on the council's part? So Harry struck something, I think, that needs to be repeated. To keep the same benefits is going to cost more every single year. It's not going to go down in premium. So perhaps next year, we do need to, to come up with a plan that has lower benefits and then let the retiree choose, do they want to keep the premium the same, or do they want to increase the premium to keep, keep the, the current benefit that they have today? That may be a decision that we need to make next year. Again, we, we don't have time this year. At, at this point, Mayor, that's, that's all the questions or comments that I have.
I want to bring back this discussion from last year. Last year at this time, we were talking about doing away with the whole thing and making the retirees carry the entire burden. And that was a discussion, and that got overturned, and we end up assuming that, and we, we voted on it and cleared it seven-oh. Now, that was with a different council, but regardless, we made some steps to certainly go forward with this. And this decision is not easy. I mean, this discussion's not simple. We have people that we're trying to take care of. In these discussions, there's also a city view, and I, Daniel, I'm going to call an audible here, but I'm going to want you to talk a little bit as somebody that has seen these and dealt with it for fourteen years. Give me an opinion of what it is and how this affects going forward.
First of all, I can tell you right now that there's two sides of me, and I'll, I'll share both of them. My heart and the commitment is with retirees, but my business thinking on this is solvency. And how can we take care of the, the insurance that we have for everyone at this point? That's a struggle that I have, and looking back at a decision that was made by previous council and previous administration, quite frankly, as far as the recommendation, it was something that was going to prove very challenging for the future. And on our part, I know that you've already mentioned, Veronica, as far as the legislative changes that happened last year that caused this half a million dollars that we ended up having to cover. There's legislative changes happening for the city as well. As far as the revenues that are coming in, we're being very limited at this point, and we know that even that is coming back again as far as for discussion legislative changes that probably will limit the expenditures, it'll limit, I mean, the revenues that we'll have coming in, which goes back to what Tommy just said a while ago, too, is we'll have to be taking a look at services, Harry said it as well. What can we do to minimize our services to make sure that we, as a city, remain solvent? We've always budgeted very conservatively. We, we maintained being in the black year after year. But the challenges are real, and for me, looking at the current situation, I understand for the retirees, my goodness, I want to do everything I can possible to, to really assist that situation, but the other part of me understands, too, for the solvency sake, we're going to have to make that tough decision and say, do we continue moving forward this way? I know that the other, our, our employees, they wanted to keep pretty much a similar type of benefits. Their, their portion went up almost two hundred percent, forty-four, forty-eight dollars is worth they're paying. So again, on my end, I'm torn between the two, but I do feel that solvency for the city moving forward is the most important thing that we should be looking at, and that's my thought on that.
I'm sorry.
Thank you, Daniel.
Tom, could I make one comment, please? Nobody is sneezing at sixty-two thousand dollars, and in the grand scheme of things, you can look at it, it's either that's a lot or that's not, not that much. Most of these people, when they did hit in that sixty-five year, that was twenty-five years ago, almost twenty-six years ago, their pay scale was much lower than what it is now. And the only reason why I bring that up is we don't get to decide what that burden is to someone else. I have no knowledge of their financial situation. It doesn't seem like that's that much money, and I agree with that. My stance is we made a commitment, whether it was previous council or however many years you want to go back, twenty-five years, but that, that was something we gave them, and that we, I believe that we need to keep our word on that. It's going to get tighter every year and harder to come, you know, to make two plus two equal five, you know? I, in good conscience, can't jerk that from them right now. That number is going to be dwindling, you know, as we get past twenty-five years and all. But with, especially like with our retired firemen, retired police, some of these may have stayed on as long as they could, knowing that they would have that guarantee, and so they stayed with the city. We've got a, a long, very loyal and committed staff, and they have always taken care of us and protected the city. And for this amount of money, for this year, I, I, I have to honor that. I have to honor that commitment that we made to these men and women however many years ago. The, going forward, there will, every year's going to be hard decisions, hard discussions. Every day is that way. But I really implore us to be diligent in trying to find the savings to do it so that we can keep our word to these men and women that we gave twenty years ago. Anyway, that's, that's my two cents. Thank you.
Any other comments from the dice? As the mayor, I don't want the lead of this to sit on any one of my council members. I have to sit and say that we have to make a decision based upon fiscal responsibility. I fought to keep it last year when we tried to get rid of all of it. So I will make the motion to go with what we have here, and we'll have to make a motion first, and go with what is advised by staff for the retirees to take the four point one-eight percent increase of thirteen dollars and fifty-two percent, and fifty-two cents.
Let's take it.
The first by the mayor, and a second. The first by the mayor and a second by Harry Thomas.
Tom, is that meaning that we pass that, that increase thirteen, fourteen bucks, pass that to the retiree or we pay it?
That is, goes to the retiree.
So they're going to bear the cost, not the city?
Correct. All right. So that's the motion. We have a first and a second. Now, we're going to open it for public comment and then we will vote on it.
Russell Smith.
Russell.
I'm here today, I guess not as much for myself. In fact, that's what Alan and I have talked about. We're here today for the water department employees. And let me begin by saying, Mr. Mayor, council, staff, your staff did a great job in providing the insurance this year. We, in our meeting that we had, when we found out what it was, I mean, it's wonderful. A couple of you have not, several of you actually, have not been here before, so I think it might be a little bit important to tell you what happened many years ago. Many years ago, the city promised those who retired from the city that they would provide them with health care. They did this because they could not provide them with any type of competitive pay. I think it was in the late seventies, early eighties when I first became aware of this as a policeman. But one of the greatest examples, I think, that y'all could have to understand where we were at as a city, not today, but back then, was when I went to Odessa College as a sergeant to recruit. They had police departments from everywhere and Bill Cooksey was running the Odessa College law enforcement and he gave us fifteen minutes or so and we all talked. I was the last one. And after I spoke, a guy came up and said, man, you made a great presentation, but you need to know that you are not even within five hundred dollars a month of what all these other cities are paying. That's why the city made the retirees the promise, because they couldn't pay us. Or as the Midland city manager told me one night, he said, they won't pay you. There was never any question about this benefit until a number of years ago and then it all raised its ugly head and several of us started having to take blood pressure medicine again. But I contacted TMRS at that time. And if you'll look at the first pages on the handout that I presented to y'all, you will see that sixty-two of those employees made five hundred dollars or less in retirement benefit. And I know from, it's kind of from memory and I have gray hair now and it could be a gray-haired moment, but I know there were some in the three hundred dollar category out of the water department, street and bridge, the clerks, all the people that did the job of the city. By the way, I was in the forty-nine category, forty-nine employees, if you look at that, when I retired. And I sure didn't retire like police chiefs from other cities. Am I at a time already?
That was five. Can we give him an extension? That was a three. You've got two more.
Okay. I want to share something with you. Your retirees in those days did not retire with any kind of standard of living as those in the same jobs from the cities around us. Because one of the main quantifiers in the TMRS benefit is the salary. You've got us five hundred dollars below when I'm going up there to retire. So try to recruit. The next handout is from city personnel in nineteen eighty-nine. It says, the city will continue to carry retirees on the health insurance plan at no cost to them. And that is what we understood back in those days, that it would be at no cost to them. And then there's two others in your packet that say eighty-five to eighty-nine. Too many of your city retirees who are eligible for this benefit are dying now and the numbers are going to be going down. We're watching, we see it, the obituaries, we go to the funerals. The dollar amount that you seek today may seem inconsequential to you. Me and Alan, it doesn't affect us. But there are those that it could be devastating to. Three hundred a month plus social security? Social security low because of the salary? What are we doing? Again, I want to thank the city manager, the HR director, Veronica's been great. I hope the next time when I get a call, I'm not out of state with my wife on vacation when I'm told I need to be here on a Monday. But that's where I was. I will tell you that we were the ones, actually Alan brought up the tier. So, but I'm just telling you, you've got water department and other employees that this is going to hurt them, even though it's that small. Thank you all.
Thank you, Russell. Heather, more comment?
Alan Gilbert.
Alan Gilbert.
Thank you all very much for taking the opportunity to talk with us this morning. We appreciate it. As Russell said and he laid this out, and as a person that's been involved in the city for many, many years, I understand a position on both sides of this. As Russell stated though, you saw that when, in your handout, you see that the city did make the promise and it was a condition of employment with people at that time, that we came on, this was told to us, this was told to us as employees, as a member of the city council in nineteen seventy-four, nineteen seventy-five, that was a commitment of the council at that time, that this would be done. So that was a condition of employment. And that's very, very important, that that be understood, because we all grew up in our jobs, understanding that. Russell talked about all the employees, nineteen seventy-five. When I began as the judge, the clerk in my court was making three hundred and eighty dollars. Police officer was making five hundred and eighty dollars. That was the salaries at that time. So you have all the facts and I understand your position of what you have to do with the city. The one thing I do want you to look at though, is the difference in the amount of people that we have coming over to the sixty-five, because in reality, that's a savings to the city of a hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars. And we're talking about sixty-two thousand dollars here. But if there's thirty, there's actually thirty-one, if my numbers are still correct, Veronica. And I want to thank Veronica. She's been, her and Daniel have been very great working with us through this. There were nine people that already came on, twenty-two people that will be coming on this year going into the sixty-five. And so if we take that times the three hundred, and I believe the number's three hundred and fifty-six dollars difference per person, comes to over four thousand dollars a year. So if we take that times thirty-one, just what we know is going to come in this year, that's a savings. It's not in the over sixty-five budget, but that is a savings to the cost of the insurance of over a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. And each year, that's going to increase, the number of people going into the sixty-five. We lost eleven people this year off of the program. We gained eleven that came in. There's somewhere between seventy and ninety people still left that can come into this program. We've got a couple of them sitting right over here that'll be coming in at certain times. But this other number, and I'm one of these guys that any day, our numbers are going to drop. There's, it's just going to happen. And we're at that pinnacle where this is beginning to happen. And so it will be making a difference. I believe the city will see these costs starting to go down, not because insurance is going down, but because the numbers are going down. I want you to think about yourselves, mom and dad, grandmom and granddad. I just lost my mom a month or so ago. Her retirement was seven hundred dollars a month. Her social security with hers and dad's was nine hundred dollars a month. Thirteen dollars meant the world to that woman. Not that she ever had to spend her own money, but it meant, it meant the world. Those clerks in my court in nineteen seventy-five that made three hundred and eighty dollars, by the time they finished, most of them in retirement was around eight hundred dollars a month. So thirteen dollars is a lot. Thirteen dollars is a lot. And so I'm asking you to fulfill the commitment that's been made by the city many years ago and do what is right for all of the people that worked. And I can even tell you this, and three times I recall, we were told there will be no pay raises, because we can't do pay raises in order to continue doing the retirees' insurance. And we went without, the whole city went without pay increases because of that. So this is not something that's just being paid for by today's employees. It was also prepaid by each of those employees. Now, the money wasn't the same, but the money's not the same. So it's comparable both directions. So the only thing I can ask you is to consider where the long-range plan is going to be. We've got a number of years left. I mean, most of us are getting up close to our eighties and like Harry, we understand the situation. We know where we're headed to. But this is one thing that gives us our, was that five? That gave us peace of mind then. And all I'm asking is that we continue to give these people peace of mind. Thank you.
Judge Gilbert, before you leave, what do you think at this point is probably more important, the quality of the plan or the cost of it?
Well, that's a double-edged sword.
It's the one we're sitting with right now. It's the one we're sitting with. And I mean, I get that. I'm just, this is a hard thing for all of us and I just need your opinion on it.
Well, you know, I'm that guy that looks at both sides of everything. That's what I was trained to do for fifty years of my life. And I can argue both sides of this, to be quite honest with you. I really could. But you know, we, it's easy to say, well, let's get this thing down into zero cost. But when Joe back here has to go to the doctor and because we dropped the plan, instead of paying thirty or forty dollars for that, he's going to pay eight hundred dollars. Well, that eight hundred dollars is more than what he's going to pay for the plan. So Harry talked about that a while ago. When you're shopping around, you've got to watch, because we'll get hurt worse, we can be hurt a lot worse by shopping plans and taking out benefits than we can by paying thirteen dollars. I mean, that's, that's not what I want to tell you, but you know, I'm going to be honest with you.
No, but I think what we're looking at is, we have an entire group of staff at the city that has worked hard and diligently and I can't compliment HR for what they've done for us this year on our health plans. And we've had some guarantees that go out two and three years. Unfortunately, upon my inquiry, this, this does not. But we're at a point right now that the, you know, one point five, six-two million, and if we could get a little help this year on this one, next year, we may do what Tommy Hebert talked about, is come back to the sixty-five retirees and say, here's a zero-cost benefit, here's a different one, this is what we're going to look at. But I just need you, as kind of the leader of the group, you and Russell, to understand it's very difficult for all of us. I hear it, I'm sure you hear it from both sides, but I hear it from all the staff on where we're going to sit with this.
And it is. It's a very difficult job for each one of you to make. I understand that totally, you know? And the employees today, I mean, it's just as important for them to have that insurance and to be able to do that. We, I mean, we all understand that. We really do. But, you know, and you talk about tiered, I talked with Veronica and Daniel the other day about this when we were meeting, you know? If we've got people that are making eight hundred dollars, nine hundred dollars, a thousand dollars in retirement, something like that, you know, can we look at a certain point where we say, okay, those people are zero? Now, if we're making fifteen hundred, twenty-five hundred, three thousand dollars a month in retirement, okay. You know, where I'm at in my retirement, I'm blessed in my life. I am so blessed, you know? Make me pay it. I deserve to pay it. But they don't. Some of them don't. And I'm happy to pay some of theirs. I told them that the other day. Give me a number. I will pay theirs.
And you would. We know you would. That's why you're the judge. And we get that. You have conveyed very honestly your whole thoughts about how we move forward with this.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Judge.
Thank you.
Well, so this goes to legal, after they've made one public?
Mayor, that's at your discretion. Normally, I'd say no, but I mean, you have the discretion.
So is it legal or not legal if he makes a statement?
It's legal if you want to.
Russell, please come forward.
Let me just say that.
Wait, Russell, get to the microphone, please. Judge Gilbert can't hear you if you're not on the microphone.
Do you ever think that in this issue, you know, I came to y'all a number of years ago and I asked that y'all do something so we're not doing the same thing over and over and over? Read the back of those packets, please. This can't, this is, the whole nation is dealing with this, not just you.
Oh, we realize it.
Okay. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Russell. Mr. Hebert, do you have a question?
No.
I thought I saw you raise your hand. Any further questions, counsel? Any more public comment? All right. Veronica, with that, we have a first by me and a second by Harry Thomas. We'll go through and vote for this individually. I will start over here. If you're in favor of conveying the thirteen dollars and fifty-two cents a month to the retirees, that will be a yay. If you're opposed, be a nay. Mary?
Nay.
Okay. Karen?
Nay.
Patrick?
Yay.
I am a yay. Harry?
Yay.
Yay. Tommy?
Yay.
Item passes four to two.
Counsel?
We'll move into item B, discussion, direction on infrastructure assistance and new residential developments. Presentation made by Public Works Executive Director Shane Kelton.
Good morning again, counsel. This morning, we want to, we've had, just kind of want to have a general discussion with counsel today. We don't necessarily need any decisions, want to kind of seek some direction maybe as we move forward with this. But again, I want to, we just want to visit with y'all. We've had some developers that have recently approached the city and looking for some assistance in some of the oversized infrastructure that we ask them to place within their subdivisions as they're building them out. A lot of this, you know, a lot of times, we ask these developers to, for increased sewer sizes, water pipe sizes, things like that, is, as we're building out, because we're looking at what's going to happen in the future, out further past their subdivision, when we go to the next one and we go to the next one. We need to make sure that we have everything sized correctly, that we can, that we can handle future expansion as we move forward. And that's kind of on the utility side. And then we also have areas where we have arterial, arterial streets, the sixty-four foot wide streets, where the extra wide ones, and specifically, in the case that we're talking about now is Twin Mountain Drive, as we, as we're looking at Twin Mountain Drive, looking at that and how that, how that's going to extend out into the future. And there's different scenarios in how this plays out. But again, on a sixty-four foot right away, or like Twin Mountain Drive, if you have a developer on one side and a developer on the other and two different owners, then they can split it each with their incremental half. But if you're the developer that owns both sides of the road, because the thoroughfare plan splits your property, then you're on the hook for all sixty-four. And so we have some of those issues going on. We also have another developer, we actually, the city reached out to them. They're out on the outskirts of town and for them to extend sewer out to that far was going to be. far was going to be prohibitive for the development that they were looking to do. So they actually went back and changed their game plan and replatted into half-acre lots so they could put septic systems out there. As we look, as we look to the future, that's, that's not something that we, we want to do when we start considering, there's multiple factors, but the main one is, is that as we look at long-term water supply needs and we look at, and what the future of San Angelo is going to be out into the future, we want to make sure that we can recapture all of the water that we're sending out, or as much of the water that we're sending out as possible. And so as we, as we start looking at that, we want to make sure that, that, that again, from, from a, from a city's perspective, from a long-term water supply perspective, that, that we were, were watching out for that. And so we did, we actually approached one of the, one of the developers that, that was looking at that on the outskirts of the city as well. And, and so, you know, and with, you know, another reason is, you know, we, you know, we don't, we want more density in our housing developments as well. We'd, half-acre lots, you know, we can get a whole lot more on a regular-sized lot than we can a half-acre lot with a septic tank. And so again, we want to make sure that we're, from maintenance costs and all kinds of issues, tax base, all of that, we want to, you know, we want to encourage higher-density developments as we move forward. And so as we're moving, you know, as we're moving through this and, and these developers approach the city looking for some assistance in how, how, how the city may be able to help, help push these developments along, because these developments have stagnated because of the higher costs. Ever since 2020, I mean, we have definitely seen it in the city, and I know that's transferred on to the developers and everybody else, is, is just a staggering increase in the cost of, of putting in these utilities and putting in these streets and the infrastructure necessary to move forward. And so, you know, wanting to assist and help move development forward and continue development, especially some of these outlying areas on, on the edge, which we're going to see more and more of as we move forward, as we're, we've kind of, everything that's already inside the city limits and kind of already built out is being, being completed and, and it's time to move on to that next, that next subdivision. So as we're moving through, we, we reached out to, or these developers reached out to us, and again, we have reached out to another developer as well, again, trying to figure out how maybe we can work together with them to assist them in moving these projects forward. One, one of the things that, that we've come up with, and, and we're not quite sure on the instrument yet, we've been visiting with our city attorney's office and, and what the instrument might look like, would be to work with the developers and the city would put in this oversized infrastructure, but we would have a, whether that's a voluntary assessment-type situation, or it's a developer's agreement, some kind of contractual arrangement to where, as, you know, we would put, we would put the infrastructure in upfront, but as the lots sold that, that were being serviced by this infrastructure, that the city would be reimbursed those costs over time as those lots sold off individually for builders to build on those. And so that was one, that was one concept that we brought forward to them, and the, and the developers have all been somewhat receptive to it. And, and again, we don't necessarily know what the, the specific instrument would look like and how, exactly how it would work. But again, as a general discussion topic, we wanted to bring this forward to counsel and see if there's any interest in counsel moving forward with this, or if there's other, other things that counsel may be interested in working with these developers to help move these, move these developments along. And again, to help create the type of developments that we want to see in our community. And so kind of, that kind of gives you a, kind of an overview of, of what's going on. And again, we would like to just get your thoughts. Again, we would come back later. If y'all do want to move forward with something like this, we would, we would, we would kind of re-huddle as a staff and with the development community and come up with probably a, a policy that's a little more, has a little more teeth to it and a little more certainty in what we're going to do and how we're going to do it and work out all the details. But again, that's kind of an open, open discussion for counsel to, to get y'all's opinions and y'all's thoughts, and if y'all have other ideas that y'all would like to share with us that may, that may work as well, too. We do have some, a couple of developers out in the audience as well. Russell is here as well, that I know representing one or two of them, one of the two of the developers as well. If you want their perspective or their insight onto some of the issues that they're dealing with as well, that may help facilitate the discussion.
Shane, I'll say this, this item, I got more phone calls this week than the retiree. Okay? There's a lot of hope and there's a lot of optimism with being able to create something that helps our builders and the HBA go through and help us gain more housing. I campaigned on the fact that we don't need 50 or 100 more homes, we need 200 more homes. All right? And the point of it is, we need to do whatever we can to help be fiscally responsible to our citizens, but also help builders, because every time one of those goes in and gets completed, that's $3,000, $4,000, $5,000 to the tax roll. And so we, we have to let our short-term obstacle not get in the way of our long-term objective of creating more housing. With that, you, you're talking, it's a pretty gray area you're talking about. Would you talk about putting a committee or a group? Isn't there already a group you could work with?
Yeah, there, I mean, there are, there are groups. And, and again, we have, this has been a, we, we did have a couple of requests come into us, you know, from specific developers for specific areas of town and situations. And, and again, it's not, sometimes it's not just the oversized pipe, or it's not the size of roadway. In one, one instance, we have, there's going to have to be a substantial increase to, to a lift station as well. So again, helping, helping overcome those initial costs, I think, I think is vital. And so it is, again, just a general discussion, it's gray, we have a lot of details to work out. But again, we, we didn't want to spend a lot of staff time and, and waste a lot of developers and community, community folks' time that would come to the table and help us work out these issues and these details, if, if this was not something city council wanted to support and back.
I think these are, let's get some questions from the DIAS, and then we'll bring up a couple of people. But we do have some people that have to be gone by 11 o'clock, if not sooner. So let's try to.
And again, very gentle, we, we wanted to make this quick, we didn't want to drag this out or later, we just wanted to get some general direction.
Let's open up to any questions from the DIAS. Mary?
I don't really have a question, but I think we need to be pro-developer, err on the side of the developers to keep that cost down, because it's, whatever we do, it's going to trickle down and make that house less affordable. So I'd like to work very closely with every developer and get everyone's perspective on it. So as long as we can keep that dialogue active and thorough, fantastic. But I, I do want direct input from these men and Tony Jones and some others. So that's my two cents. Thank you, Shane.
Yes.
Agree, agree. Continue the dialogue, I think it's important.
Patrick?
Yeah, I'm, I'm the same with everybody else. I mean, when you look at our, the city's revenue, our biggest portion comes from new developments and then new properties added to tax rules. So whatever we can do, that helps affordable housing, that helps development, that makes sure the city can grow the right directions. We have a little bit of a, a say in it, a little more say than just saying, well, here's what you got to do if you want to do it. We can help them, which in turn helps us. So rising tide raises all ships. I'm, we're working something out.
Harry?
Yeah, just real quick, I'll probably piggyback on what's already been said. I think we need to do whatever we can do to help keep those costs down so people can get into affordable homes. I do not like the idea of putting septic tanks inside the city limits. I think that's wrong, even though today they're safer than they've ever been, I don't think it's what we want to do. But I will have to say this, when you go together and start putting this plan together, I want to see how the city's going to be reimbursed, how we're going to track that. Because the bottom line is, is I do not believe that we need to invest a lot more in this infrastructure without a partnership. So my comments.
Tom? I mean, Tommy Hebert?
I like Thomas.
He's the best.
I knew you'd like that. I like, I like the, the much bigger picture thinking. I don't know if you remember Shane, you probably do. I wrote an epistle four or five years ago specifically on extending Twin Mountain all the way to Sherwood Way, Merton Highway. I still stand by what I said in that email four or five years ago. We need to start thinking much bigger. This is much bigger thinking. I, I like this. So I support moving forward, figuring out new ways, possibly better ways, more financially sound ways for the areas that we're talking about developing. So keep up the good work and, and move forward.
Shane, is there any of the builders that want to speak? Excuse me.
No, they, they need to sign up.
Any public comment there, Heather?
Good morning, Mayor, counsel. Russell Gully with SKG Engineering, 706 South Ape Street. Staff has really been kind of a, a refresh blessing to come to us and, and really open up and be pro-development, wanting to be helpful. You know, even some of the developers have said, wow, are y'all sensing a little bit of change in how the city is treating developers? And it's yes to that. And so I don't know where it's coming from, but it, it's great that we're getting to do that. And, and so there is, there's, through the years, we've had kind of one-offs of challenges here and there that, that they needed a help or an oversight, but, but we're, now we got three of them kind of coming together all at once. And so it's like, that's kind of a resounding, hey, there's something that needs to, to be discussed. So, so really, and Shane hit on so many great points, you know, septic systems on these lots, you have to have a bigger lot. So now it's wider, so now you have more street to maintain based on the tax base. And so that's all smart things to be thinking of when you do that. How and when is this to paid by the city or by the developer? You know, there's mechanisms, there's other cities and developers that are doing this. You know, there's some, and we've sent them to the city, that, that a developer in Lubbock and other towns are, are working together and partnering on getting some oversize or extensions done. Because all the easy stuff in San Angelo's been done. You know, all the easy land's been developed. Now we're having to reach out in infill where it's a challenge, or there's streets that, that have to be arterials. So, so, so really, there's a lot of effort that needs to be put into that, to look at that, and, and that requires that public-private partnership to get some of this stuff done. So we even talk about, what about the construction of it? Is it the city that pays for it, or, or bids it out, or does a developer do it? And, and even they're seeing, these developers are like, we were, the city was going to bid it out and it was $10 million, but we on the private side were able to do it, and it came in at $6 million, just because of some of the efforts and some of the way these contractors will bid, just because of what some of the city requirements are and, and some of the cost requirements are. So how do we have those conversations of can the developer do it and bid it out and still meet law and all the bidding regulations? And, and hopefully that can be a savings to both the developer and the city when it's an oversizing, or if it's a portion of Twin Mountain Drive. So I think staff, we're all good to have those conversations and keep working on this. You know, for years, the city's just paid for, when as an oversize of a main, the city's just paid for the difference in the pipe size. If they had to do an eight-inch and the city wanted a 16, they only got reimbursed or paid for the difference in the pipe. But when you look at it, the fittings, those fittings are substantially more nowadays, really, when you have to do a 16-inch by 8-inch tee, that is a whole lot more than just an eight-inch tee. And so historically, the developer's been having to foot that bill, plus the added bedding that's associated with that, the bigger trench. So, so the city's kind of been getting a good deal on that at the developer's expense. So if, and y'all have done and helped out with some of that and to equalize that. And so that's been a great step to show that you are supportive of, of the developers and helping keeping that affordable for San Angelo. So I'd be happy to answer any questions, but we're having great conversations with staff, and we feel this is going in a good, positive direction.
Any questions for us? Thank you, Russell.
Thank you.
Heather, any more public comment?
Yes, sir. Eric Von Rosenberg?
Eric Von Rosenberg.
Good morning, counsel. Mayor Thompson. Pretty much everything that was said before I got up here pretty much sums it up. Mr. Thomas, I will kind of discuss a little bit about what you said, because I'm a part of that development that, and if you, it, it's a section of land out off of Arden Road. And we, if you look at the history, when we bought this and how many plats that we have done, we started off with a major density, you know, subdivision. That was our goal. It became so cost-prohibitive over the years that we were kind of forced into the, the idea of half-acre tracts with septic systems. It was the only way it was going to work for us financially. Over the past couple of years, all we've done is talk about affordable housing. And, you know, we actually got the phone call, that scheduled meeting for us to sit down and talk and kick some ideas around, and these ideas and this discussion has been something that has taken part in Lubbock, where my partners also built. And there's several ways to do it, and I think they talked about it, you know, the developer's agreement, and then basically kind of a, a work assistant loan from a city that would be paid back over time. Both are great ideas. I think we don't have to get into all that right now, but it's two options. And as a developer, we're open to both, because we do want to do smaller lots, higher density. We know both of those will give us what we ultimately need in this town, and that's affordable housing. And so that's kind of what we're, that's what we're wanting. And I think with Shane's assistance and Russell's and you guys, I think we're all heading in the right direction to see that kind of get accomplished. And really, I mean, today, I think, if there's any questions you guys have for me, be happy to talk about it.
I just think seeing everybody's commitment and attitude of, hey, let's, we've got initiative to move forward, and I would say, this isn't anything they haven't always had, and this group has taken it upon themselves to reach out to y'all. And so I commend them that, for thank you for your input.
It's been great, and I will say, you know, we sit on some other boards that, that I sit on as well, and the open line of discussion has just been amazing. So I, I really appreciate it, and I think it's necessary, and I think it's headed all in the right direction.
Cool. Thank you. Heather, any more public comment?
Thank you, counsel. Appreciate you. So with this item, do we need to make any, it's not a vote, it was just a discussion, right? So just move on to the next item? Okay, we move on to item C, considering appeal by the Public Works Executive Director and the Planning Development Services Director of Planning Commission's August 18th, 2025 approval of two variances associated with the LC Guyer Section 1 final plat and sidewalk waiver appeal. Number one, variance from Section 10 dot 3 dot A2 to allow minimum pavement width of 20 feet in lieu of required 26-foot for North Post Street from the intersection of East 18th Bypass and North Post Street to the intersection of East 14th Street and North Post Street, a local street. Number two, variance from Section 93A dot 5A3 to allow no curbing in lieu of required header curbs on East 18th, East 18th Bypass, North Post Street, current private roads, North Star Drive and North Gate Drive. And item three, variance from Section 9VD1 and 2, east sidewalks along the existing major collector, East 14th Street, sidewalks along local roads abutting the planned development with an RM1 underlying zoning, East 18th and East 18th Bypass, North Post Street, North Star Drive and North Gate Drive. Presentation made by Planning and Development Services Director Aaron Vanoy.
Thank you, Mayor. Aaron Vanoy, Director of Planning and Development Services. So this was an appeal of the Planning Commission's decision to give full variances for some items. And before I go too deep into it, I just want to talk about the property real quickly. This is the northeastern portion. You can see this is 14th that comes in here, this is Poe Street, and this is 18th and the 18th Bypass. And so that's kind of the area that we're going to be talking about. This is in District 4, Mr. Patrick Keely. It is in the Pawland neighborhood. It does have a planned development zoning, and the vision plan is neighborhood. It is just over nine acres, and it's 49 lots, there's 48 residential structures, and there's one kind of community house right there in the middle. We've had lots of discussion with this, particularly with Baptist Memorial and Buckner, their, their team, as well as SKG assisting with some discussions and our, our operations team. And they've actually come to a very strong agreement of going, making this a viable project beneficial to the city, as well as beneficial to the Baptist Memorial team. Here you can see that the, the lots are laid out, they have platted them where the existing structures are. They are looking to dedicate these interior roads, North Star and North Gate, have the two entrances that are already designed there. They will make some modifications at these entrances to meet our standards, and then they will go in and mill and overlay and repave these two streets to our standards. The city already maintains the water and sewer that are under these streets. This is just the city now coming in and taking the maintenance over for that street. This is just the city now coming in and taking the maintenance over for that street. Those two private streets that are in there now, they will become public streets. We're not widening the right-of-way, we're not changing out the curb and gutter. They will add some curbing along here, just to align that a little bit better along that street, as opposed to being a much more open space. Again, you can see those structures there on, with the overlay. Right here is that kind of community center. They're going to probably continue to use that, maybe as a community center. They have the idea of potentially creating an HOA that will help with some of the maintenance around the area that the, some of the homeowners have never done, their own maintenance, as far as yard mowing and things like that. So they would have an HOA that will assist with those things over a period of time. Right here on Poe Street, this is the street that we're asking to have some infrastructure improvements, particularly with some paving width as it gets narrowed towards this end. We also have a lot of drainage that comes in this way and flows down Poe Street, and then to add the curb and gutter along here allows that to continue to flow and try to get over to the East Angelo draw. We do think that is very critical at this time. We've just seen, you know, although it was a 200 or 500-year event, we know that this area of water comes that way, we need to channelize it and get it over to where it needs to be. One thing that we did talk about is, we are not going to require sidewalks on the internal, there's just not enough space. We're not going to require a sidewalk on this whole loop on that side. What we are asking is a sidewalk here on 14th, and that's because we have that in a CIP project, we just don't have the sidewalk funded. And so we're asking them to do the sidewalk, and they have agreed that that would be the smartest place to do sidewalk for this whole project. So what we are recommending is approval of partial variances. Obviously, these things are still things that have always happened. This was the one that we were talking about, and these two, and then Poe Street. So I think I have on the next slide, talking about the agreement that we've gone through, that they will do a mill and overlay with proof rolling, remain at the curving paving width and curbing, no sidewalk requirement, right-of-way dedication is acceptable. The sidewalks would only be along East 14th, that major collector classification, North Poe paving width, curb and gutter. And they would work with the design and review team in our engineering services to come up with what that design should be. And that's going to really focus on the drainage and the alignment of the street. And the East 18th and the East 18th Bypass, initially, we're going to, they're going to look at curb and gutter. They're also looking at potentially abandoning the East 18th Bypass. One, it reduces costs for us, it also gives some of their properties a little more land, and it probably would channelize that water down 18th a little bit better than coming through that bypass. But here are just some of the images that we had taken during the planning case. You can say, these are just internal roads. This is on that North Poe, looking north, from south looking north. So our staff recommendation, let's see here. We are doing, let me, our normal standard nine conditions and three notes, but essentially, we have come up with a partial variance request for additional paving on North Poe, and we're talking about the denial of the request of, to not construct curbing along East 18th and East 18th Bypass and North Poe. That's really part of that partial variance. It's going to be determined on the water flow and the size, and what type is the right type of curbing in that area. I just want to also say thank you to the Baptist Memorial team and Buckner. They were very willing and wanted to do the best for the city and for their community as well there. They sat down with us a number of times and worked through these things, also with Russell Gully with SKG, who was kind of a person that could talk about, this is what that's going to cost. How much is it going to cost them to do this development? So, you know, Baptist is not in the business of being a developer, and so having that expertise was very important. But we did sit down, the city is supportive of taking on this development and taking on the internal streets. We've been able to work through these conditions, and we believe we're all in agreeance at this time. At that time, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Absolutely, Aaron. So I've got maybe three questions. Is planning and utilities good with this?
Yes, we are.
All right. Is Buckner and Baptist Memorial's good with it?
Yes, they are.
They've all had input?
Yes, they have.
Is public safety good with it?
Yes, they are.
Okay. I'll open it up to questions. Mary, Karen, Patrick?
On the 18th Street bypass, can you show me what you're talking about getting rid of?
Yes, sir. Let me get back to, maybe this one right here. So you see where this kind of curvature comes in here? And so the Poe Street stops there, and 18th stops there, and so it'd be that piece in between. It's not heavily utilized. We have roadway that comes in here, we have emmerich that comes in and connects to 14th and still comes in here. All of this is getting down here, going back towards Bell Street to the east. And so it's really this section right in here that would abandon, that would allow these lots to come back. There's a couple of lots here that they would be able to have theirs, they'd probably have their driveway back here, because the street's already there. Why change that? Just change the drives right there. There's a culvert, and I've got a lot of red stuff on, there's a culvert right here that's allowing drainage to come this way. We'd be able to improve that and make sure that when that water is coming down, it is coming down correctly down that way for drainage. Now, that's for the future, they may choose to abandon that, that would go to Planning Commission and then ultimately City Council for that abandonment. It would have them then kind of replat that area to add that into their lots.
And then on this, so basically, they're wanting us to take over, after they do all this, and they're wanting us to take over and maintain it like a regular city street, right?
That is correct.
But we will not be getting any property taxes from any of these properties for the foreseeable future, correct?
Until they start divesting of the properties and selling them off, talking with their team this morning, they're looking at projected at 2027 to start that process. And that's when they have talked to their residents that that process would start happening. And so that's their goal at this time.
That is my main worry on this project, is we just have no recourse of getting any money back from maintaining all that until they decide to sell. So I don't know if there's something we can put in there that they have to pay a maintenance fee until that's done, or they have to sell by a certain day. I don't know what we can do as far as that goes, but that is what I would like to see, something that we kind of have somewhat of a hard out, or a maintenance fee to recoup from the city costs.
I guess maybe we could agree for a term not to accept the, those improvements until that happens. But may have to need to think through that a little bit.
It had to be through like a developers' agreement?
Oh, yeah, yeah. We'd have to get a developers' agreement.
I may ask Shane Kelton to come up, because he could probably speak a little bit to accepting a new street and how long that lasts before we have to do seal code and maintenance.
Yeah. Generally, since they are working towards basically a mill and overlay project within the development itself and what we would take over, you know, they're probably, at best, would be a year, probably a year, year and a half out getting that accomplished. And so that gets us a lot closer to that 2027 timeframe. After that, normally, if we can, we like to make a first application of a, an agent that helps the oxidation of the roadway in about year three, looking at the first seal coat, year HA, HA5 type situation, probably year five to year seven of the, of that roadway. And so, and luckily, with this subdivision, it will be low traffic, just based on the number of homes. And it, the streets aren't really cut-through streets, they go nowhere that anybody would really cut through, so it's going to be local traffic. I probably wouldn't see a lot of that on there, but again, like as Brandon stated, we could, we could put something in there that the city will not accept it until those, until properties start becoming up for sale, so.
My question, Shane, originally this got through planning with no changes put back on Buckner and Baptist Memorial, correct? It was just come through. So do you have an estimate of how many dollars they're going to put into it to make these variances acceptable? Just a guess, is that a couple million?
The street, the, I'm going to say the street itself, we were probably in the, the two streets are probably in the half to three-quarter of a million. The expansion of Poe with the curb and gutting, curb and gutter, you're probably, again, another 300,000 to 400,000. Just, again, that's off the top of my head, I don't really even know what those distances are, so.
Right. So it wouldn't be a far assumption to say they've put 2 to 3 million dollars back into this, helping us absorb it?
Correct. And I mean, and they're also, they've even mentioned within that meeting as well, too. I think one of the things I brought up in the Planning Commission meeting when we were talking about is there's no gates leading out, you know, from the existing fence. And so they talked about even going back and adding gates within those fences for those homeowners, you know, to access outside of their yards as well, too. So again, I think, I think the Baptist Memorial and the Buckner group, I think they're, they're really conscious of what's going on and what the city, or what they're putting on the city's backs. I think they're very conscious of that, and they want to make sure that, that we're all going to, we're all going to be mutually taken care of in the end, so.
Harry, do you have any comments?
Yeah, just real quick. I think this will benefit not only Baptist Memorial and Buckner, but also that particular neighborhood. So what you're proposing, I think, is, especially since all parties are in agreement, I think is what we want to do. So, thank you.
No comment. Patrick, do you have any more comments? Do I have a motion?
I'd make, I'd make a motion. Patrick, do you want to make a motion, Patrick? Okay. I'll make a motion to accept, as the staff proposed in conversations with Buckner.
I have a first from Tommy Hebert, and a second from Harry Thomas. Any public comment?
Yes, sir. Jerry Davenport.
Good morning, Mayor and City Councilor. My name is Jerry Davenport. I live in 176 North Star. The picture you saw there, I'm here speaking in opposition to the city taking over the North Gate Community, is what we call it. And Mr. Vanoy did a very good job of describing that community. Just say this to give you a little background about myself, but a lot of the people that live in the Buckner Retirement Community or Baptist Retirement Community kind of the same situation. I've and I, my wife and I were ranchers at Sheffield, or Pecos and Terrell Counties for over 60 years. My wife was born here, my oldest son was born here, and I have made many trips to San Angelo, but I only knew three locations. Because we were ranchers, I knew how to get to producer's livestock, I knew how to get to Palmer's Feed, and two auto supply stores. But many a time, I went down through the middle of town with a load of goats, traffic crowded. Whoever built that bypass has got, and I proved that that is the most wonderful thing that ever happened to San Angelo, I could get in and out. But anyway, a little over eight years ago, due to age and health reasons, we were 150 miles from San Angelo, is where our ranching operation was. We moved to Tom Green County, two miles east of Crystal. Get close. This is, this is our home, our life, West Texas. So eight years ago, so six years ago, I started, I had had both knees replaced, or knee replacements. My wife started having health problems and memory. She was diagnosed with Alzheimer's, and we've made several trips to ER, and if I appear nervous, I am. But anyway, we started realizing that she wouldn't drive. She just said one day, I don't know where I'm going, here's the keys. And she's never driven since then. And so we started looking at a place that we could move to be in town. And we looked at the various retirement facilities, and Shannon was a big thing for us. We loved the Shannon. But we found, and after visiting those, that Baptist Retirement Community met our needs. And we were able to purchase a house there. And so anyway, my wife broke a hip, but, and am I out of time, or?
Yeah, Mr. Davenport, we've hit five minutes, but let's, let's go ahead and finish up what you need to.
Okay. So my wife is there in one of the facilities, they have a good number of things that the Baptist Retirement Community offers. But to say that, they have a pharmacy, they have a doctor there, and all kinds of other things that meet the needs of elderly aging people. Say it's one of the best. But to say this about the North Gate, it is a high, a high wooded fence, semi-gated, it has patrols at night, there's a number of widows, and everybody's elderly there, your background checked. One of the things, and I'll say this for myself, we aren't sure if we're even going to be taxed. It's supposedly in limbo, and I don't know, you know, and I'm not very involved with that, to just hear what kind of results are. But from what I understand, the possibility is, we will never be taxed. We're not now. Tax exempt.
Though, those things have nothing to do with our conversation today. We're talking about variances on the road today.
Okay, well, anyway.
And I don't mean that to sound bad, we're with you, but I would say we have to stay on the topic here.
Okay, well, we moved here, we've moved there, and we have planned and hoped we will live out our last days. Most of the people there don't have money to move somewhere else. There's not another facility that offers what we need, like the Baptist Retirement Community. I'm seeing people that move here, they love San Angelo, we love San Angelo, this is our home, Lord willing, we'll die here. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Davenport. Any more public comment?
Russell Gully.
RG.
Russell, with SKG Engineering. Again, staff was really a pleasure to work with. We had, after y'all tabled it and gave us time to come back and have a discussion, we had a good, healthy conversation that really, everybody's like, wow, that was a good conversation. So we were able to come to terms, come to agreement. Aaron's done a good job of kind of summarizing all of that. Patrick, you were worried about tax or the maintenance of that. And Buckner's got to decide kind of the timing of this, they're letting residents know 2027 is kind of their timeframe they're looking for. But until we record the plat, it's not going to become city maintenance to deal with, and so Buckner will continue maintaining and being responsible for the streets on the interior of it until that plat's recorded. And at that point in time, they'll start conveying off lots and homes. And so then, then it would come into the city maintenance program only after we've made those improvements and signed off by city engineer, and then the one-year warranty period. And so, so there is that timeframe. And it's like really any other development, you know, the city approves it, the streets get put in, and this was somewhat unique, because there's already homes there. A lot of these new developments, it's just vacant lots, so you may have a two, three-year build-out before you realize full improvement and taxation on those lots. So this one's kind of unique in that perspective, but it will come on, and as Buckner goes, rolls them out, and they're no longer owned by a 501(c)(3) or non-tax entity, then, then the appraisal district will, I guess, be aware of that and stuff. So we would ask for your approval as presented, and really happy to answer any questions.
I have no further questions. Do y'all? Thank you, Russell.
Thank you.
Heather, any more public comment? With that, with that, we'll look.
You got a motion, I think.
We have a first and a second.
Can I ask on that, is this anything that could be, could the developers' agreement or something like that, even if this is passed, could that be put in after the fact? I mean, is that, is that different?
Yeah, so the developers' agreement, that's part of the ordinance, so we're already authorized to do that, to make sure those improvements are done either before or after the plat's recorded. So yeah, that's already authorized, and we'll negotiate that part.
And that's up to the city manager?
Yeah.
Got you. So we'll look for a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passed. Item passes 5-0. Now we'll move to item D. First reading and public hearing of an ordinance for ROW 25-06, a request to abandon an unimproved portion of a street right-of-way measuring 60 feet by 100 feet south of the intersection of Montague and Coveland Street. Aaron, you're on.
Thank you, Mayor. Aaron Vanoy, Director of Planning and Development Services. You see this little piece right here, it's an undeveloped piece of road that would have come through to the south. It's never been developed. It does have a, some utilities in it, but this is in District 4, Mr. Patrick Keely. Neighborhood is, I'm not sure it's Fort Concho East, but it might be Fort Concho East. It is RS1 and the vision is neighborhood. And so this is really just abandoning this piece so that the rest of these that are touching and abutting it can start development. Because our subdivision ordinance says if you're abutting right-of-way, you have to improve it, but there's no reason in this case to approve it. We did send out 21 mailed notices. We did get seven in favor and zero that opposed.
Seven in favor?
Yes, sir.
That's like a record. I've never seen it. Okay.
Again, as you mentioned, that area was 60 by 100 feet, stubbed-out portion of Montague Avenue. It has not been improved. There is one city sewer main that will require an easement when they replat. And the abandonment does not appear to negatively affect, affect any traffic patterns or the environment or the surrounding owners. With that, this, we do bring this forward with approval from staff. Basically, the, the three conditions are payment shall be remitted for the abandoned right-of-way, replat, and then the approval of the associated plat and payment will require an issuance and recordation of a quitclaim deed. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, Mary and Patrick?
I don't think there, there is, it's a little farther east, but this, there's no, being this is close to San Angelo, there are no water effects for this property, correct?
That is correct. We looked at that when we did a pre-development meeting and there's no, no issues on this part of the property.
Okay.
All right, with that, I'll look for a motion. First by Patrick. Second by Tommy Hebert. Any public comment? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passes 5-0. With that, we'll move into closed session, executive session under the provision of government code Title V, Open Government Ethics, Subtitle A, Open Government, Chapter 551, Open Meetings, Subchapter D, Exceptions to Requirements that Meetings Be Open Under the Following Sections. Item A, Section 551.072, Deliberations About Real Property Regarding 3129 Red Bluff Road. B, Section 551.072, Deliberations About Real Property Regarding 7409 Knickerbocker Road. Item C, Section 551.072, Deliberations About Real Property Regarding Approximately 512 Acres Out of the EJ Wertham Survey, Abstract 3945. 534 Acres Out of the TJ Smith Survey, Abstract 5145. 545 Acres Out of the JW Johnson Survey, Abstract 8134. And three acres out of the JA Eggleston Survey, Abstract 4984. Item D, Section 551.072, Deliberations About Real Property Regarding Approximately 3.179 Acres Out of the FT Beaver Resubdivision of Block 49, Fort Concho Edition. And Item E, Section 551.087, Business Prospects Negotiations Regarding 1, Project Hyperspace and 2, Project Gateway. We're now in closed session.
We're going to open the meeting back up with follow-up and administrative issues. We have nothing to follow up with coming out of executive session. We're going to move on to item eight, consider items discussed. A, we'll pass on that. B, consider approving various board nominations. Airport Advisory Board, Mark Clark, SMD III to a third term. And Sam Strahan, SMD V to a second term, both ending October 2027. Design and Historic Review Commission, Donna Criss, SMD V. And Brooks Weiner, SMD VI to both a second term ending September 2027. Public Art Commission, Mark Stevenson, SMD I to a second term. And Raul Ruiz to SMD V to a third term, both ending April 2027. The Tax and Increment Reinvestment Zone Board, Carlos Rodriguez, SMD V to a second term, ending July 2027. Are there any... I have a first and a second. All in favor of the appointment, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. With all that, all the appointments pass, five zero. We'll move into item C, announcements and considerations for future agenda items. Does anybody have anything they want brought up? I have a first for a close. And a second, this city council meeting on October 21st is over.